Should you come back?
Yeah. Well, it's a long story, but I'm on my way back from Houston, Denny, Mexico.
Yeah.
My focus is like a later week.
Okay.
And so you had to prepare the issue here with the city and some way back. Was at the end of the day, getting my brief now.
Yeah. Oh, nice. And you're still here?
And she says, hey, did you see the front page? She said, oh, no, what? There's kind of a big, quick thing happening over there. The city council. Yeah. So I said, well, that's right. All right, Coach, I got you. It's good. It's a godsend.
Yeah. I just do. Talk to my team.
I haven't seen it again. Yeah. Yeah.
Who's in charge?
Did you have a game the other night?
No.
Little bit score. Enjoyed the camaraderie and friendship. That was as ugly as any performance. Going down the street. It is. Well, I think you're pretty good, but. A lot of people understand. A lot of people there get a nice.
Yep. What I hate, you like my deep, I like that long. Yes, I agree. I agree.
The council 5:00 PM. It's come to order and we'll begin our study session September 18th. Mr. Bertrand.
All right.
You've been busy.
Yes, we've been busy. We had a lot on our last agenda, the Planning Zoning Commission. And as for an update for the council, the first item we had was a request of Brad Schlosser to rezone property at 1927 North Kings Highway from residential manufactured home district to the residential urban mixed density district. Probably familiar with the Starview Mobile Home Park. That's what this involving. There was some, I guess they're, Mr. Schlosser's trying to reach an agreement with the neighbors to satisfy some concerns and we're going, we tabled it to revisit it at the next P&amp;Z meeting. And we're hopeful that those concern, those concerns will be all taken care of and maybe we can take some action on it at our next meeting. Another item that we had that's in front of you.
Council, any questions on that one? Okay, all right.
All right, another item is the public hearing on the request of EED Development LLC to rezone property along Carr and Dona Drive from R2 to R1. We recommended approval on this. This is out in the Dalhousie area. This is generally just kind of a cleanup matter on that zoning from R2 to R1.
Okay.
There was a public hearing on the request of Johnny Gaines to rezone property at 921 Independence Street. And then there was a 3 South Pacific and an 8 South Benton, all of them really together. The request was to rezone it from C1 to M1. And this one's a little bit unique in the fact that this is a small little car lot that you are, I'm sure, aware of over on Independence Street. Gravel lot, small lot. It's, it's, it looks like a car lot and always has been as far as I know. However, he lost his, he grandfather rights to use it because it lapsed for more than nine months. He was unaware of that. So the request was to rezone it to M1 Manufacturing, which that would allow him to operate a car lot there. There was some opposition, namely from Trinity, that they would rather there not be a manufacturing district right there to encompass, actually, it would have been three lots there. So we were in this position where manufactured, there's really not much manufacturing around there that we thought there was some, a few lots over. So we recommend zoning it to C2 instead of C1, which C2 allows for the car lot. C2 satisfied Trinity. However, I don't believe staff was on board with C2 because they consider it spot zoning. So you'll probably hear more about that, but our council recommended C2 zoning to try to allow it to be operated the way that it probably should and yet not allow it to be a manufacturing district. However, we also voted to only, only rezone one lot there, which is his lot and not the others, to just leave the others the way they are. I don't think they were looking for a rezoning, so to speak anyways. It was just kind of a package deal. So we just recommended rezoning the one lot to C2. I hope that makes sense.
And what are the others now?
I believe they're C1.
C1.
C1, yeah.
Okay.
So all, all three of them were C1 and we're just recommending zoning to C2.
Okay.
Public hearing, is there any questions about that one? Public hearing on the request of Lester Chapman Jr. to rezone property at 1237 North Water Street from R2 to M1. He's looking to do a bait and tackle and a little store down there on Water Street. And we, we believe that there was some, some support for that. There was certainly no opposition at the meeting for that. And we recommend, we recommended approving that zoning request to M1. The only other item that I believe you guys will, will have in front of you is that we voted on Chapter 30 Amendment regarding shipping containers, which I believe you guys will have that in front of you.
Yeah.
We recommended approval of, of the code that you have, or you will have. That was it.
Council, what's come forth from P&amp;Z? Any questions of Trey on what they brought forth to us along with staff?
I have none.
Anybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good to go. Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is not on the agenda this evening? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Debra Hamilton. I reside at 105 Green Acres in the city of Cape Girardeau. I am a property owner and a, I have a residential real estate located in the southern part of the city and the Good Hope, Benton Street, Pacific Street, and Ellis Street. And I come before you to voice my concern and complaint about two matters. The first matter would be the increasing blight in the 800 block of South Ellis. I have called previously about abandoned homes and unkept yards that have become a nuisance and have become very unsightly. I called in the summer prior to a family gathering in the 800 block of South Ellis and I was advised at that time by the nuisance abatement officer that the, initially, a story changed. Initially, the story was that the city did not have the money to afford a second abatement officer when I expressed to her that I would be calling my city councilmanly to express my concern about our financial state, that we could only afford one abatement officer. Then the story changed somewhat to, well, the money is there, but we only have one. That was the summer, probably June. This weekend, we were down in the 800 block of South Ellis and the kids and I have grandkids, we went for a walk, but we had to leave the sidewalk because one of the homes down there are so unkempt that the grass is knee high and the brush along the side of the fence is overgrown to where it's, it's blocking the sidewalk. So I ran into our councilman who happened to be in the neighborhood and I expressed my concern to her and she invited me here tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Moore. And just as a courtesy, I went by the police station to advise them that I would be appearing before the council tonight to express my concern that even at this point, months later, that the problem still exists. Spoke to the same nice young lady, again, expressed, we only have one officer, we only hired a second officer recently, but I'm rejecting that as an explanation because I know and you know that we invest in what's important to us. And if the appearance of our city and the entire city is important, then the police department and the Cape Girardeau city as a whole, the council will make an effort to make sure that that does not exist. So I reject the position that we just have one person, we invest in what's important to us. And it's on that understanding, then it would appear to me as a property owner and a resident of the city, that is somehow less important, what our neighborhood looks like as opposed to other neighborhoods look like. And I'm sure that's not the impression that you wish to display to the community, but that's what it feels like four months later and the problem hasn't been resolved.
Okay, number one, not acceptable. We drove those streets last year when we were going through our initial walk, drive through a purpose-built community and found several areas in several blocks in those areas that were unacceptable. A year ago, probably might not be the same ones, but we leave your contact information with staff here before you leave. And we will be, we will, I assure you, we'll be down and look at that 800 block again and we'll get some answers for you.
My second, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. That's what I expected you to say. My second comment, same vein, different subject. We have had an increasing problem with squatters in those abandoned homes in that one block. There are, and it's all rental, except for the house that our family owns.
Same block?
Same block, 800 block of South Ellis, but it goes over from to Pacific to Benton Street.
You're okay.
There's, there's.
That was a malfunction.
There's four, there's four abandoned homes in that one block of Ellis Street. When I say abandoned, they look partially boarded up and they haven't been in several months since the summer. There was an issue, one landowner did board up her home. The other homes are unboarded and we have an issue with squatters. We have homeless people and drug addicts who break into those homes. This summer, my uncle, who's a senior, 70 years old, still drives, which is okay, which is okay, which is okay.
Careful.
I know, I'm losing, I'm losing the crap. So.
No, no.
He was driving through the alley behind one of the homes and this is one that was abandoned and he pulled into, to our property, he just, you know, pulled his truck in and parked and some guy comes running out of the house, this abandoned house, and accuses him of spying on him and says, you know, what are you doing looking in there? What are you doing? Mind your own business. And he's like, I was just driving through the alley. So he's, you know, he doesn't want to stay there. When he comes in town, he stays at my house now because that was scary. The house is abandoned, we all know it's abandoned, there's no lights there, there's no water there. I took pictures after I talked to Mrs. Moore, I drove by, the house is completely wide open. Door is wide open and they just come and go as they please. It's become a public safety issue that so many of those houses are abandoned, which if you can't rent them out, you know, the community's changing, we're expanding, there's no market for it, but the homeowner, a homeowner should be required to board up those houses and the police officers, more than once, when they see a door wide open and it's obviously abandoned house and there's windows out, why can't they notify the property owner to board up the house? I don't want squatters and drug addicts and criminals. Empty houses, it's not safe. We have too many seniors in that neighborhood. I think something should be done to address the number of squatters that are in the abandoned homes in that neighborhood.
Okay, be sure and leave your contact information. I applaud you for coming, standing before us. We need more of that. And I'm going to direct staff to get a report back to council and also to you on the 800 block of South Ellis so we'll all know what it is and where we're, where we're heading with it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for being here.
Mayor, I'd like to get some feedback from the council at an upcoming study session on how they feel on the subject because undisappointed or lack of condemnation spending. So I was not made aware until recently by the city manager, Meyer, that although we've been budgeting a six-figure condemnation budget, we actually haven't been spending it. So in 2014, we budgeted $218,000, we spent 33. 2015, we budgeted 224, we spent 80. 2016, we budgeted 115, we spent 26. And 2017, we budgeted 132, we spent 21. Council discussed, because we do require property owners to board up the homes, we don't enforce it. We have on the code specifically how the requirement is boarded up. We've discussed using the condemnation budget to board up homes, the property owners refuse to board up, but it hasn't gotten anywhere. Well, we need to discuss this matter further because an update from staff will be inadequate when our budget shows that we will condemn houses and tear them down, but we don't condemn enough houses.
We're planning and I don't know whether it's, they've been formalized yet at a future study session, hopefully in October, a, on this subject, on nuisance, on landlord tenant, nuisance officer, et cetera, et cetera, at a study session, a formal, has that date been established yet? Okay, we've talked to Scott about that and I think you have too. And we'll have that, we'll have that on the agenda.
And I believe we actually have three nuisance payment officers funded and employed. Is that correct?
We have three and a half funded and two and a half employed.
Okay.
We're going to process right now.
Thank you.
So I think that's, that's to come. But thanks for researching that. Any other comments? Anyone else to, anyone else on any item not on the agenda? Okay, cheers.
Okay, Mayor, Council, this evening we will have a presentation from Sarah Moore with the Arts Council for the children's artwork presentation, which is always an enjoyable presentation. We also had scheduled to have our rescue team here that was recently deployed to help out in Texas with the Hurricane Harvey response. They were scheduled to be here this evening so that we could recognize them and this afternoon they were called out for a mutual aid call to help out in Scott City where that fuel tanker turned over on Interstate 55. So they've been preoccupied with that all afternoon. I believe just a few hours ago, they're still on scene and dealing with that. So we're going to postpone that presentation until the next council meeting and hopefully they'll be able to make that for that recognition.
We will still do it, subject to future deployment.
Correct.
And it's great to be able to have trained personnel that we can do mutual aid. And it works both ways. We have mutual aid in too, but it's, it's great to have that flexibility to be able to, on a moment's notice and sometimes such as Harvey on a, on a week's notice, to be able to deploy trained, professional people to, to a need. So we will, we will do that again. Okay.
Are there any communications or reports from council?
I'm going to talk on the grant symposium tomorrow. Also, I mentioned that I helped, aided in kicking off the 9/11 run at Fire Station 3 and also the Alzheimer's Walk, which was hugely attended, at Cape County Park North the last Saturday, the last couple of Saturdays. Others?
I'm going to give a little information about the results of the Senior Information Day that seniors have all been together at last week. Just give you an update on that.
I was going to give an update on the MML meeting last week. Okay, that'd be good. You do that?
Mayor, I was going to do an update. I had a tour of the new and old police stations last week and had some time with Chief Blair, if we could. You were at the OPOA conference last week. During communications, would you like to go over some of that and discuss?
Okay, that'd be good. Anyone else? Okay. Anything from staff?
Just a reminder, the South Cape NDI group is having a meeting tomorrow evening, September 19th, 6 o'clock PM at the Shawnee Community Center. So encourage everyone to come out and provide your input for that. That's all from staff. We have no public hearings this evening. On the consent agenda, we only have one second and third reading from our previous meeting, which is for vacating a portion of Amethyst Street between North Middle and Fountain Street. The next item, item number three, is something I want to call your attention to. It's a resolution authorizing a development agreement with Alliant Development, see for the purposes of rehabilitating some buildings on Good Hope. And you might be familiar with these buildings. They're not in the best condition and I want to commend Alex McElroy, our Development Services Director and the Downtown Development Team for coming up with the idea to issue an RFP for the redevelopment of these properties to encourage some reinvestment in the area. So the RFP was issued, we did have a response by Alliant Development, which is represented this evening here by Ben Traxel and Tance Whitehead. And anyway, just a really exciting opportunity for redevelopment in that neighborhood. And I believe they're here for any questions, if you have any.
I don't have questions, but I'm very excited about the potential and the probability of that being a very successful development. We've long looked for any kind of development along Good Hope. We've seen it on the west side or on, on the east side from the River Campus and coming out a little bit, but to start from the west side now, I think is a great opportunity for, for the future for Good Hope. When Mark Bliss called me, I said, there's a new hope for Good Hope. And it's a, it's a, it's a great beginning and I want to thank both staff for their vision in, in coming forth with this proposal and also Billy Traxel for responding. I think there are great things to come, so to staff and to, to the firm, congratulations and thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a contract with Horn and Shifrin for capital improvement water system projects within the city. We also have a next item in agreement with Thomas Industrial Coatings for two bridge improvement projects, one on Southern Expressway and also the Lynnwood Hills Bridge Repair, which is off of Route W. The next item is a license and indemnity agreement with Grace Works for an awning at 135 North Main Street. Item number seven is a resolution acknowledging receipt of an annexation petition from the Humane Society for, this is for the property that they recently acquired and they have requested that be annexed into the city limits. We also have authorization for final payment to Pennzoil for the construction of the fire station number two annex building, which has been completed recently. Item number nine is accepting improvements and authorizing final payment to Eastern Missouri Industries for the Fiverr to serve the new indoor sports complex. And item 10 is accepting the improvements and authorizing final payment to Pennzoil for the new indoor sports complex. Are there any items that you would like removed from consent agenda? Okay, if not, we have three new ordinances. The first has to do with Chapter 30 regarding the shipping containers, which I believe you're all familiar with.
Council, any comments, questions on what's come to us?
All I can say is that the law and material go. And the chapter is a big chapter and it covers a lot, a lot of different things.
It does, and that's one reason we had staff put together the table to synthesize all of the information as concisely.
Put together too, because that really puts things in a real concise thing, you can decipher a little better than going through, going through and write all the red pages and then I finally got that thing to end, I thought, hold on.
Why didn't they put that at the beginning, right?
Because you put it at the end. But thanks to staff and to P&amp;Z for really working diligently on, on this issue through the, through the months. It has, council, it has satisfied my concerns. Any other comments before we move on from that one? Okay.
Okay, the next new ordinance is amending Chapter 18 of the city code related to the J.C. Municipal Golf Course Advisory Board. This simply changes the number of times that they're required to meet every year from 12 to 6. Again, that's a minimum number of times that they have to meet. If they would like to meet more, they can certainly do that. And the last new ordinance is regarding a record plat for the Route K North 3 subdivision. You'll remember this was recently approved after the fact the legal counsel for the applicant discovered some mistakes with the ownership information. So we're simply repealing that ordinance and approving a new one for the revised record plat. Are there any questions on the new ordinances? Okay, if not, then we also have appointments to the Golf Course Advisory Board as well as the Tree Board, and I believe you have your ballots.
Council, we have in our hands tonight, the Golf Course Advisory Board, which gives us the opportunity to reshape the, the Golf Course Advisory Board. We have numerous qualified and citizens that are willing to serve and everybody, there are several that have different, differing opinions there. And I'll let the rest of council weigh in on that, but I, I am encouraged that we have, we have so many that are willing to serve on, on this board. There was some confusion or so forth with, with what the board recommended and some comments from staff. And I sent a email to council yesterday and after I sent that email, I found out that the designated J.C. representative is Joshua Schultz, that I didn't have on the list because I wasn't on one of the other lists. So that one will be, as, as an incumbent and the Cape J.C. representative will be one of the, one of the five and then there'll be four, four others. And you have my, my thoughts on that and I'll let council weigh in with thoughts on, their own thoughts on the golf course. Course Advisory Board.
I'd like to advocate for Ken House. He's a retired educator. He's played at J.C.'s for at least 20 years, because I used to play with him 20 years ago out there. He's continuing to play out there. He made his interest known to me. I've known him for years. He's an elder in the church, you know, he's quite capable fellow and a clear head and I recommend him. Same could go with Gary Ren. He's one of these guys that volunteers for lots of things, doesn't expect credit, he just gets the job done. And so, I'd go with him. Well, flip forward the fact that I've known Speedy for a long time. Some of you know him from other ways and so forth, but I told Speedy I'd support him and I do. Those are my three out of the five that we've got to vote on that I would recommend to you.
Mayor, if I would add something to that. I personally was on this board for seven or eight years and I worked with Speedy and Jack Watts together. Speedy's a nice guy, but I think Jack's a better fit, having been on there with both of them. I would just say that. Like I said, nice guy, just Jack, very good knowledge base of that. Also, I wanted to say something about Nate DeSavino, Assistant Athletic Director at the university, really wants to get involved. I've worked with him on numerous projects in the community, different organizations and I think those two would be very good assets for that. Also, Kent Tally and his father Bob and my grandfather worked together, known the Tally family for a long time, very knowledgeable, plays a lot of golf, good golfer, plays a lot of golf out there and all the courses around here. So, getting some of those guys that, from a golf perspective, that don't just play at J.C.'s, but play at other courses and get some of that outside the box, I think it would be a benefit.
Okay.
So, wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
I want to suggest Gary Ren. For the last, I know, going on four years, he had his name down, he inquired about becoming Advisory Board.
Okay.
So, I would recommend him. I've been knowing him for years and I think he's a good guy.
Okay. Anyone else?
I do think Gary Ren's a good choice. I think John Small's a good choice. John's been around golf, been in golf business in the past and has played several courses around and has a good knowledge base. I think he's a key official for the board.
As I said, we have many good candidates. My choices with Charles Hetty, with Nate DeSavino, he's got the training and the knowledge to be a very good rep on the board. Of course, Joshua Schultz, Kent Tally, recently in the last couple of years moved back from Atlanta, but native here and very knowledgeable in golf. And then my other choice would be Jack Watts. Danny?
I'd advocate for Gary Ren as well and I know Jack Watts pretty well. I know he's had a lot of management experience and he's been involved with the J.C. Golf Boys for many, many years.
Yeah.
Assuming he was on a while and then came off and he's wanting to get back on, is that correct? Nate DeSavino, I think's also a good choice. Lots of fetters wanting to get involved in the community at a higher level.
Go ahead, you can make that question if you want to.
Ask me if you want to.
Sure, go ahead.
Are there any candidates on this list in the audience who'd like to speak to address qualification?
Sure.
I'm John Small, 1113 Patricia. I've been a citizen of Cape Girardeau since 1973. I ran a business here for 20 years and I was, had applied for the golf board. If you, you know, I've played all over and would love to be helping the city out. I'm getting ready to retire in a couple of years and I was going to donate some time back to the city.
You got a business out off North Kings Highway, not too many years ago either.
Yep. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, John, for being here. Okay.
I have to say for one thing, I'm awfully glad to see so many qualified people who will want to be on one of our advisory boards.
That's great to have that list. We have 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 17 on this list. So, there are going to be some real qualified people that aren't on there, but we'll stay with it. Yeah, that's right. Yep, that's great. It's a healthy sign. The Tree Board, the recommendation from staff there is George Gasser, but again, as mentioned by Councilman Fox, there's other qualified people on there. Okay, any other business to come before us, counsel? I will mention the Tuesday evening meeting, Shelley at Cup and Cork, I've been going there again tomorrow night. We have two meetings now. We've got an NDI meeting and that meeting. I am going to be involved in the grant symposium tomorrow night. Is there another council member that could attend that? Can you do it? Is it 6:30?
6:30.
6:30, okay. At Cup and Cork. I will be able to do it next week, but I'd like to have counsel represented there at each one of them. So, thank you, Annie, for doing it every week for 10 weeks. And this is the third one?
Yes.
This is the third one, okay. All right. Okay, seeing another business, we will need counsel to have a closed session tonight for legal actions, litigation, communications with our legal counsel and personnel matters pursuant to revised Statute 610-21, numbers one and three, if I could have a motion.
So moved.
So moved by guard. Second by more. Those in favor, aye? Those opposed? Okay, we'll stand adjourned and reconvene at 7:00 PM.